We open the podium. Yes, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mayor Protan. So I didn't want to just read a sequence of events because I know there's been discussion publicly about the previous letters and I want to answer that as well as kind of the timeline here. So on October 7th, the city staff, and I know there's some confusion here, but the city staff presented a proposal for the street reconstruction projects for Berry Street and Monroe Street to the city council. Per the city's special assessment policy, which applies to all right-of-way projects except routine maintenance, these projects would use special assessments to share the cost between the city and benefiting property owners. So the current special assessment policy that council approved at the last meeting, that is the first section in there that states that moving forward, any reconstruction of roads, we will use special assessments to move forward. Light maintenance, we do not. And that's exactly what the policy says. And the previous policy that we updated said the exact same thing. And so that's why we bring the projects forward for special assessments because it's a city, it's approved by council and we're following the policy as provided for by council. So council directed the city engineer on October 7th to develop the plan specifications and cost estimates for submitted to council for consideration of establishment of the SADs for these project areas. On November 26th, a petition opposing Berry Street project was submitted to the city's clerk's office, which she has the file there with the petition and the letters. And so, and the petition that was used at that time claimed that on October 7th, as Mayor Protan Palladino indicated, council voted to levy the $5,000 special assessments on the 29 parcels. So that's right across the top of that petition and the premise on which the letters were generated. That's not, again, what council did. Council just instructed the engineer to prepare the plans and specs. So those residents who were objecting were thinking it's because they were already being assessed $5,000, in our opinion. And then council, and again, council had only directed the engineer to prepare the cost estimates, no assessments had been approved. That is what kind of occurs tonight with the subsequent meeting. The petition and the six letters from the residents were included in the communication item on December 2nd, 2024, at Councilman Soha's request because that information came out, we put it under communication and we had that discussion where Councilman Soha indicated he was kind of opposed based on the opposition to proceeding with it. I was asked the question and I said, well, opposed to the city engineer wasting their time or her time preparing the plans and specs, we could scrap it and move on to something else. Now, at that time, it was Mayor Protan Palladino who requested the plans and cost estimates be prepared and no council member objected at the time. So that's how we proceeded. And that's what we put together and brought to you previously. Once we start that, we go through this process to this point where you guys either turn it down or say we're not going forward or we are going forward. Subsequently, through council direction, you know, we've worked on with Mayor Protan Palladino's assistance revising the city's special assessment district policy, working with Kim and I to come up with what council passed at the last meeting. On February 5th, we revised the policy. The revised policy went to public service committee for review. On February 5th, the committee unanimously recommended it to the council for adoption. And then on February 17th, the last meeting, council unanimously approved the updated policy. And they approved setting the public hearing dates tonight for the two districts. As required by city charter, once that council approves the district's hearings, then we notify the property owners and give them instructions on how to object or support and how we proceed. All letters and communications regarding the projects have been shared with council and are available in the meeting packet for review. And again, the only reason we felt that the, you know, member letters and petition did not apply is because at that particular moment in time, we didn't even, we didn't have numbers. We didn't have a project. So, under the pretense that everyone was being assessed $5,000, that was incorrect. So we requested updated letters so that the residents knew, you know, what they legitimately were objecting to. So that's where we're at today.
Thank you for that background. I appreciate it. Yeah, so we should, we should talk through this, this hearing procedure, figure out how we want to do this in the future. And when we put forward the specifications for a project, we should probably say, we're just thinking about this project in general. We haven't proposed an SAD. The minutes from both the October and the December meetings have proposed SADs. So I see how there could be confusion there, but thank you. Thank you for outlining that for us. Okay. Any other comments or questions on Berry Street? Yes, Councilman Soha.
Assuming the vote goes the same as the last one, I will be an additional no vote to this because my constituents don't want this and they've reinforced that with, and the charter says we need seven votes because there's over 50%, which we won't have. Can we just, and I want to give you the opportunity to speak if you so desire, not try to hinder that at all, but just to speed up the process. Can you just make it happen and just be done?
We have to have a public hearing?
I understand.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. We will open up the podium. You have three minutes. Please limit your comments to the proposed Berry Street project.
Hello, I'm Tim Plowley. This will be very brief. I emailed all of you about this a few times. I oppose the SAD on Berry Street. I would say Mr. Palladino is correct. You guys really need to revisit and restate what the policy is for the sake of clarity in the future. Because on the December 2nd meeting, Mr. Mackey, you did make it pretty clear to council that they should, in fact, vote against, or not vote, not hold vote at all, I'm sorry. In order to avoid wasting resources, you said, I think it was something like, it's the 37-minute mark of the YouTube video, that's something like, I would almost go so far as to say, you guys shouldn't do this, not waste the resources, which I grant is ambiguous, but I think it was pretty clearly taken as a recommendation of the council. And to those watching such as myself, it seemed pretty clearly to mean that the petition had meaning, had legal purchase. Because you said, given this, all future hearings would be subject to a seven-one vote, so it's not worth it. So I really recommend that you guys vote against it and revisit the policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Drew Gamble. We're on our practice off Berry Street. It has an easement, which we share the easement with the title company and the rental property on the northwest corner of Broad and Berry Street. I was glad to hear tonight that we would have time to review estimates that were sent by the city. That's assuming, of course, that the vote goes through. It's a little bit unclear to me exactly how we'll be assessed because of the shared easement, which is a drive. It'd be nice to have the estimates written plainly so that we can understand exactly what we'll be paying and why, if they ever are sent. I have a couple of questions, which I thought tonight was just public comment, but if you're willing to answer. My wife and I walked the street the other day. It's becoming a bit of a grapple pit, like many of the other streets in the town. If you choose to vote against the repair, of course, that's entirely your prerogative, but soon people will be falling into these holes in this street, like many of the other streets. So, politics aside, it is in terrible shape. That being said, I'm not looking forward to paying $10,000 to fix it. So my question is, is a rental home, rental property on the street, a residence or a business, and you're basically leveraging the cost for those who make payments over 15 years. Does the responsibility for the leverage cost of the repair remain with the property owner if the business is sold? Or does it transfer to the new owner? Or is that a matter for negotiation between the buyer and seller of the business should that ever come off? Thank you.
Thank you. The, if there's any unpaid portion, it transfers as a lien, correct, during the sale? Is that okay if we just answer the questions now?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So to answer his questions, the first one, a rental property over five units is considered commercial, under four or less is considered residential.
Or if it's base use.
Or if it's base use. Yes.
Thank you.
It's commercial. As far as the special assessment, it follows the property. So if the property sells, that will be a negotiating item between the buyer and seller on whether they want to pay it off as part of the sale or, and normally mortgage companies will require that it be paid off either through the mortgage or by the seller, so.
Thank you. We will continue on.
Okay, I want to stand in solidarity with the letter writers, but clearly I can see the benefits of a new street. And I agree, our taxes are too high, mine aren't, and should cover more of the general street expense. But I also want to note the damage being done to our cars. So, you know, I really want the street. And why is it coming down to Berry Street versus the city? Well, I guess it really isn't because it's been explained, but that's how I felt about it at one of the last meetings that I came to. Thank you. Oh, can I ask? I looked up and it said, like, $1 million per ordinary block would cover the street plus sewer and water? And if it's three and a half blocks, that's that's a three and a half million, or whatever it is. Well, anyway, this doesn't cover sewer and water.
The BPU is covering that portion?
That's correct.
It does cover?
BPU, I don't sure if it will be paid out of their own funds. They want me to have a part of this special assessment.
Oh, but it will be done at the same time?
Yes.
No, it will not be done if this project doesn't work.
Oh, yes, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the city is giving $110,000 to $120,000 a year to the airport out of city funds. The city council has asked the airport, somebody on the airport to give a budget on how the airport is going to become self-sufficient. Last I heard, either they're working on it or they haven't worked on it. So that's not happening. $120,000 divided by 5,000 is 24 homeowners' special assessments. I bet none of these people are going to use the airport. But they're all going to use the road. I'm going to use that road. So we have 24 homeowners who are helping pay for the airport. You have raised, when we asked you to raise the hangar rates to 200 a month, you guys said 150. 800 for the corporate, you said no. I mean, 900, you said no. That's $1,200 of revenue that you could have gained from the airport to help pay more special assessments, another two and a half. So the airport is taking 24 assessments. All these people are going to pay for the airport for a whole year. The Monroe people are going to pay for the airport for another year because of that $120,000 that the city is giving them to keep it afloat. And we still don't know how it's going to be self-sufficient because I know I was here when they said we need a plan. And I'm hoping they're working on a plan. Now you want to remake 99. It's going to cost about $1 million to redo 99. So that's $200,000 that the city is going to have to take out of their pocket for a $1 million road to redesign the streets so bikers can come to town and have a bike trail because they don't want to come to town because we don't have a bike path. We don't need to redo 99. We need to fix the streets so we can walk across the streets. But if you leave it like it is, that's $200,000. It's not coming out of the budget that we can't afford because we can't afford not to give these people a special assessments on their homes. I purposely, I work for the county. I could go down Manning, cut a cross to get by the hospital. I purposely avoid every street because I can just come downhill and get home. And we're not fixing any of these roads, but we're constantly giving money out to the airport. I mean, I have nothing against the airport, but I do have against the point that $120,000 every year out of our budget's going there when it could cover 24 assessments. So you guys are going to have to look these people in the eye and say, look, what's more important? Their homes, their budgets, their life, their vacation, or putting more money out there? The airport's got to become self-sufficient. It leaves, geez, I think we were like $150,000 budget under for the streets. Well, there's $120,000 right there if the airport can be self-sufficient.
Thank you.
Hello. This is no fun for anybody. I would love the road fixed. I don't want to pay for it. And I am the property owner on the rental. So that, that whole corner there is going to be a challenge. And it just seems very unfair when the frontage is my frontage, but they're using my easement to get to their spot and they're going to get charged $10,000. I don't want to get charged $10,000. I have a lot of frontage, but that whole frontage is used for parking for their clients or for the title company or anything. So I don't even utilize that. My tenants use my parking spaces. So it's really hard for me to get up here and say, please vote this down because I would love that road fixed. But the amount of taxes that have increased over the last five years, every single one of the properties and all the millages that are hitting, and even the rental owners, the landlords, I mean, we got hit with that one millage and it was just us getting hit with it. And so the taxes are outrageous already. And for those that are landlords, their only option is to increase rents. And that's been a challenge in the community all the time. So I'm going to ask you to vote this down, but I'd love to have the road fixed. And so it is a challenge. But I don't have the money to pay for it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, did we answer the question about the easement? So, yeah, go ahead. Come on, Kim, thank you. Your frontage is going to be, I think, 16 and a half feet. So it should be quite a bit lower.
Right. It'll be allocated based on 16 and a half feet of frontage if you don't have direct frontage on the street.
Right. And what was your estimate for that? 1,500, 2,000?
Yeah.
So it should come down quite a bit? This is for 46?
South Broad.
South Broad that we're discussing, yeah. So they're not actually on Berry Street, but I believe their only entrance into their property is from Berry Street? Oh, yes, sorry. I don't think I said this at the beginning. Actually, in our council rules of procedure, if you could name, say your name and your address.
46 South Broad Street.
46 South Broad Street. Oh, you have it. I, you know what, I have it in my email. I could pull it up. I want to say it was 1,500 was the initial estimate.
1,900.
Yeah, 1,800 and $93.
Okay, 1,900. Thank you. Sorry for the delay on that question.
My name is Jenny Hallen and I'm in 47.
Oh, wait, yeah, one time per?
Oh, no, I'm just saying my birthday and address.
Oh, oh, thank you.
I'm in 47, South Southwest Street.
It was Jenny?
Yes.
Jenny Hallen. Thank you, Jenny. Sorry about that. Tim CJ Shannon.
Drew.
Drew, thank you. Okay, podium is still open.
David Hamilton, 67 South Howell Street. And my mother-in-law is on at 64 Berry Street. So one recommendation, please decouple funding from the project so that you can arrange a project, you can plan a project, and you can come so we don't have to do like Obamacare and vote for it before we know what we're voting for. You can come with numbers so people can see what it is they're voting up and down against or for. I think those will help a whole lot to decouple some tension. Thank you.
Thank you. The podium is open.
This is just clarification. You guys received the 16 new letters that were written between when the news came.
Oh, yes. Did I say that? There are 30 properties, 16 letters and objection. So this will require seven votes to pass.
Thank you.
Richard Smith, 63 South Broad Street. I just wanted to make some historical record on Broad Street. Berry Street has an elevation from, from the west side down to Broad Street. And when we get rains of an inch, inch and a half, two inches, it becomes a river. Now, when they redone Broad Street, which I think was approximately, I didn't live here at the time, it was about 20 years ago.
Oh, nine.
They were, the city of Hillsdale, the county of Hillsdale, and the state of Michigan were sued by my neighbor because his basement was constantly full of water. So they came in and they rebuilt Broad Street. Well, I think the state of Michigan decided that they get back with this guy that sued them because they left a little dip in front of our houses out there. And anybody that comes down Broad Street on any rainy day, I've seen cars slip and slide and it still cools up. And the fact is, we still had a river coming down my and my neighbor's shared driveway, a river that actually washed out the back part of Stock's Park. The city came in and spent untold dollars to rebuild the back road in there. And the next year, it was full of mud because all the water coming down our driveway washed all that mud down into that nice gravel road that they had spent a lot of money on. About three, four years ago, my neighbor and I rebuilt the driveway. Because it was, the old driveway was about, had settled about nine inches from all the water running down that series of driveways over the years. But anyway, I just wanted to be, you're engineering this Berry Street and you make sure that you got water sufficient drainage. And even, I understand they're going to do some more work on Broad Street. Well, those drains, and Jason will probably tell you, they get plugged up all the time on Broad Street. They're not big enough to start with. So I just wanted to bring this up as a point of order. And another thing, when we moved back here to Michigan after 50 years, we started looking at homes in Hillsdale. We didn't buy one. We looked at several, but you know why we didn't buy it? Because the street they were on was lousy. I remember one house, very nice in the newest neighborhood in, at the time, back in the 50s. You could park the bus in the hole out the front in the park, in the main street. I wanted to point that out to the people there, that the value with a nice street increases quite a bit. We ended up buying on Broad Street because it had a brand-new road. I didn't know it had a water problem, to speak of, but it does solve that, you know? I just want to point that, I wanted to point that out. The valuation, and of course, in 2008, if you look at the values, what happened in 2008, how many years it took to get the value back up. And taxes are too high, yes, but the city only gets, what, 32.70% of that total tax? Who gets the rest of it? County? Schools?
Thank you.
One other point, you might look at your tax, when those, some of those taxes drop off, can we do something to take that portion of that tax and throw it back into the road?
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Sonia Edwards, 64 Berry Street. And I'm also having that problem with the, the front of my house is on Berry, but the side of the house is on the alley. And the water, every time it rains or snows, it pulls there because the sidewalk has fallen so far down, cracked and broken, that it can't even drain out. It just sits there. So I just want to make sure that that was looked at, no matter which way this goes, that they will raise up the sidewalk because it's very unsafe. And I feel unsafe walking there and my mother lives nearby and she's been dying too. And I can't walk with her anywhere because it's so unsafe. So I just wanted to put that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Okay, we will close the podium. Council discussion.
I just have one comment that indeed, as the gentleman pointed out, there'll be, that property values will increase with this. So your, and the property values could easily improve as much as the, as what the assessment is, so just FYI.
Yeah, that's a good point. If you're going to sell, if not, your property value going up means your taxes go up too. So that's sort of double-edged sword there. My preference is that we do this project. I would like to spend some money to do it. We're getting $100,000, I think, from the college this year. Is that going to come through?
It should come through this year.
Okay. So we're going to get $100,000 from the college. We have about $3 million in the capital outlay fund, which we are going to need for a fire department, culvert repairs, what was the other thing, DPS building. But right now, we're collecting interest on that fund, more than $100,000 a year. We are saving money by increasing dial-a-ride rates. We're going to save money hopefully by increasing the airport hangar rates. We're making more money from fees at the beach and the recreation department. We're taking in a lot more money. Now, the budgetary situation for the city isn't great. But if we don't do this project, we're killing a third of the roads that we do this year. So my preference is we... So my preference is we negotiate a number, I would say a hundred thousand dollars to start, and apply that equally to all the residential properties in all three districts, Monroe, Arch, which we're not doing today, and Berry. From my count, there's about thirty-one residential properties, I don't know if that has changed with this update. So we give everyone three thousand dollars off this assessment. They still might not be happy with us if we pass it for two thousand, well, a max of two thousand. And then, we pass it, and I think we have the money for this. And I think this is what the capital outlay and the general fund surplus should be for. The citizen's primary concern, besides public safety, is infrastructure. And I think it's, I understand there's going to be concern, we've charged people five thousand dollars for other projects. But I think this one is different than something like the Highland Glendale project because Westwood, those aren't really streets that are used for general purposes. So five thousand dollars might make sense there. You're not going to get your road fixed if you're in a cul-de-sac. But this is a road that is used for general purposes. I think we should be willing to spend a little bit of money in order to make that happen. Councilman Flynn, thank you.
With that said, then, should we table this project for tonight so that city staff can come back with more exact numbers to say, here's what we have to work with? Or do we know pretty much, Dave, that what Josh says we have, we can use this year or next year?
Josh has his opinion and the city staff have their own opinion. Do we have the money to do this? Yes, but those monies are earmarked for other projects some large that if they occur, could wipe out our capital improvement budget. So, we've put this policy in place just two weeks ago and this was voted on unanimously. Now to come here and say we want to treat this particular area different is somewhat disingenuous to me. Because all that's happening here is that we're trying to, someone's trying to be a hero at the expense of the rest of the council board and the staff. And that's inappropriate because they were the ones, Mr. Palladino, that initiated the reworking of the special assessment policy. So, we went back and made it more fair. Now you're wanting to take money out of the general fund to prop up a district as opposed to all the districts we've done. So how do you choose, pick the winners and losers? That's what government is for, to treat everyone the same. And what you're saying is, we want to treat Berry Street differently than everyone else. And that, in our book, is inappropriate? Can council do it? Sure, if council comes back and says, Dave, you go find a hundred thousand dollars, I'll find it and we'll do it. I'm just warning you that that's not appropriate. Just like the backlash you took when we did it for an individual lot in the Westwood District, that Mr. Palladino led that effort there and then the rest of the council took the, took the backlash for giving special treatment to an individual lot owner. There was no special circumstance there that should have given someone a five thousand dollar discount. That being said, I hope I've answered your question. I just feel where we're going with this is inappropriate to the rest of the districts. Because how do we move forward with everyone else? And the more money we take from the general fund, the less money we'll have to fix roads.
So not only do we have the additional money that we're receiving as well as our money in the capital outlay fund, which is collecting interest, we, with this new special assessment policy, are going to raise an additional hundred and twenty thousand dollars than we would have with the prior policy. So if we spend an additional hundred thousand, we would still be twenty thousand in the green from where we were two weeks ago.
But if we continue to give, if we give money away, this is no different than social security. There's a pot there and if you keep giving it away, there's not going to be any money left for the folks that are meeting.
We're not drawing from the pot at all. We have a hundred and twenty thousand more in the green than we were two weeks ago. I'm talking about spending a hundred thousand when we're getting money from the college. We are currently collecting interest on a surplus. So we're going to collect interest on a surplus and then tax our residents and collect interest on their inability to pay. We're acting as a bank. Councilman Burns.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the state manager's job to determine what's appropriate, that's council's job. So, Mayor Portem, I'm here, that's, the inappropriate thing going on is your political opinion being offered to the political body here.
I'll also add on this, well, let me get off the councilman first, Councilman Bentley.
Mayor Portem, that's another great idea from you. I support it, as I supported the SAD adjustments that we did before. I might be mistaken, but I don't think if we spent sixty, eighty, a hundred thousand from the general fund on top of this, that we are doing anything, it's the work that staff has put into this. We're still, the structure's still the same for, for the Monroe Street, which we like past. Is that not right? But you're, but you're going to, you plan, your new plan is to spread, like, adjust them all down, all three of them? Well, the Berry passes.
Yes, I'm not saying a special district. I'm saying, I've been saying for a year in council, we need to move toward a position where we have more general fund revenue. We currently have zero. We need general fund revenue going toward road repairs. So I would be happy setting it as a policy. Next year, we'll also spend a hundred thousand dollars and we'll give it equally to all of the four oh one residential properties in that district. I'm not trying to act ad hoc. I want to move us toward a policy that's acceptable to residents and that doesn't have us collecting, right, we're taking money from the pot. No, we're not. I just amended this, or I requested the amendment of this so that commercial and industrial properties would pay a rate that's more equitable in accordance with their value. That got us a bunch more money. Now we can consider how we are going to use that money.
I agree.
When I say it's going into the pot, so, the purpose of a special assessment district and the two oh four street fund was to generate revenue, to create momentum, to get as many roads repaired in the quickest amount of time as possible. That's why we, the residents passed a millage. That money goes specifically into there. And then, all the special assessments go in there, all the interest stays in there so that we can create the momentum to fix more roads quicker. As we siphon off from our revenue sources, it will slow that process down, that's my only point.
We are not, okay, but compared to a month ago, we are not siphoning off any money. We're still making more money than we would have under the old policy. That's my point.
Yes, but we would be, that money would allow us to do more roads quicker if we follow through on our current policy, that's my only point.
Sure, but, I mean, we've been sort of at this one-mile point, you know? Are we going to speed this up, are there construction companies that even can do more? I don't know. Politics, you have to address the circumstances at hand. If our residents don't want something, but we have money to contribute to a project right now, then why not spend the money, that's their tax money? If five years from now, we say, we can't do the same thing, sorry, we don't have a hundred thousand dollars to distribute equally among all the residential properties in that district, then those are the facts on the ground at that point. Yes, thank you.
For tonight, what we need
I know, we're just approaching.
We need the resolution to tell me how to allocate the special assessment. I don't understand how to apply what you're saying.
We would have to apply it when we approve the rules.
Okay.
Right?
You tell me, because I'm not, I'm not following how you're seeing this happen.
Yes, Councilman Bentley.
Well, it seemed, finding gas, based on the Councilman Soha's vote and my intended vote, Berry Street is going to fail tonight. And then, we'll have to clean it up. But for the other two projects that they go through, or at least Monroe, yeah, I suppose Mayor Portem would put together a calculation that we just still use all your work. Because I think you did good work and I liked what we did with the adjustments down. But I don't want to leave Berry Street in the wind and I don't want Berry Street to, to benefit you know, compared to the other two projects. So, yeah, we'll come back and figure it out, but thank you for your work.
I just need to know what you need from me.
Yeah.
Oh, Mayor Portem?
Yes.
Just, if I understood correctly, what you're talking about is, in effect, simply increasing the amount sued with the street, which would reduce the amount of the
Yes, special assessment, that's correct.
Basically, so we'll do it.
Yes. Councilman Soha.
I, I don't appreciate you bringing this up at the moment where we're voting on the, and trying to, it is ad hoc, Mayor Portem, it sprung on us as a surprise, hey, let's do something different so that this project, I want Berry Street to go. If I didn't have sixteen, if there was only fourteen letters, I'd vote for it. But there's not, there's sixteen. And that's, a majority of the street says, no, we don't want our street. And it's an unfortunate circumstance, even though, you know, with the, with the new rules we passed two weeks ago, you know, thirty-seven hundred and eighty-six for a few properties, forty-seven hundred for another, eighteen hundred for the access. You know, so there's different amounts that are going to be, would be assessed. But to, you know, if we're going to do something like that, and in my opinion, we should have set that as policy before we come into this situation. To spring it on me like that is insulting because now all of a sudden, you figured everything out behind the scenes and then you bring it on us, hey, let's do this one different so that this street can get done. Well, you know, Councilman Wolfram spent five grand to get his street done last year. And the man who sat in his seat, Councilman Zeiser, spent five thousand dollars to do his, he actually voted his own assessment for himself. And now, you know, and they're, like, the city manager said, or I don't remember who said it, I think it was David, but he said, you know, with, when we gave the churches that break for their properties, what happened the next council meeting? Right, we're opening the door for a very severe public backlash because we did something ad hoc and, you know, just for this one because we care about the people on Berry Street, which I do. Or we care about Richard and his house so it doesn't get flooded anymore, which I do. I didn't know that happened, that was new information for me about his property. So I think it's disingenuous, I don't appreciate it. If we do, I like the idea of it, but let's set that as policy and have council vote on that and move forward with it in that direction, not just say, okay, we're going to start doing this. That's my opinion. So, tonight, again, I'm voting no for Berry Street and if some new resolution comes up to that end, Mayor Portem, I'd vote against it as well.
When would you like to have these sorts of discussions?
The committees, whatever committee is around to the funding of these special assessments, which we just voted two weeks ago to amend the special assessment, and then today you come up and you say, I want to change it again. I just, I don't understand.
We didn't have letters objecting to the project.
We did too, we had the
No, the city staff said they were in battle.
That's, but I was in communication with the residents of the street, working on getting, overcoming that. And I also would have argued tonight, had they not brought those new petitions in that they already objected to at once, it's semantics at this point. And I, I mean, personally, I think it's disingenuous for the city to outright reject them because they said there was five thousand dollars. So, that's just
That's a situation.
Miscommunication and a misunderstanding. But I, like I said, I want Berry Street to be repaid, but I'm not, I can't vote for it because my constituents say they don't want it done. And overwhelming, overwhelming, so.
That's why they don't like the funding mechanism.
That's why I'm trying to find a compromise here. I don't understand why I'm supposed to bring this up. We have the objection in front of us, it's new, we need to find a compromise. Or override, but you're not going to override. Yes, Councilman Soha.
I just think that, what I was saying, we're a city manager of this government here. And I'm not saying your idea was bad, but to throw it in front of us, in front of a vote, does not give us enough time to understand. The city staff and David Mackey know all the nuts and bolts of the budget. All of a sudden, we got this and it, it sounds nice. But you're not giving us any opportunity at all to dissect this, to have questions, to have good dialogue, to make a good honest decision. I mean, I'm not saying it's not a bad idea, but I don't understand the idea enough to vote on it. So to throw something at us right in front of the vote is just inconsiderate.
But we aren't, again, we are not voting on this right now, we're just voting to establish the district. Yes, Councilman Bentley.
At least three of us on council, notwithstanding my earlier vote tonight, want to lower and eventually end the special assessments. Mayor Portem, if they're talking about this, is forever. And I believe perhaps Councilman Burns ran for office because of this issue. So, it's not out of the blue. We are trying to do the will of the people by lowering SADS. We will not, we, we do not intend to make all roads that have already suffered the SAD call by continuing them indefinitely. We need to end them and lower them as we can in the meantime. So, yeah, Mayor Portem has been open about this and I support it. And the timing is what it is.
Yes, Councilman Soha.
Thank you, Mayor Portem, I appreciate that. I want, I despise the SADS. I, 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 as I've discussed this with the city manager and the city staff, I've not been shown another way, another avenue of funding that's going to allow us as a municipality to fix our crumbling infrastructure in a way that actually makes progress. Without the SADS, as I understand it, we're just going to continue to put patches on roads, but we'll never get good reconstruction, right? And unfortunately, it appears tonight that Berry Street is going to stay in its unmaintained state or its disrepaired state for the foreseeable future. My, that street might maintain that condition before I expire on this point, on this point, at the way that the city's been able to maintain its infrastructure to this point. But hopefully, we can change it. I do want to see the SADS go away. You know, the challenge with the city of Hillsdale is, we are strapped in our budget. And our budgetary capabilities are, we have obligations to maintain the airport. We have to, because we've received funding for that entity for decades. And if we stop funding the airport, then we will be assessed penalties, as I understand it, to have to repay some of the funding that we received, if I understand that correctly. So, that argument is invalid because they're separate things. The SAD's our unfortunate necessity for us to help get ahead of the curve on getting our roads rebuilt. And it was passed by a council in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty? Twenty twenty, which was just before I came on. And first, I didn't like it, I voted against it, because I didn't understand fully. And then when I had a more full understanding, I voted for it and less the residents, like, the Berry Street residents came out against it. And then I, of course, will follow my constituents' desire for that. If we want to make a consideration to use more of the city's funds, then let's discuss that and make a policy of the council so that we all know that that's the new way, we're going to, we're going to spend more from the general budget and do that and say, and council, I'm all for that. If we can make that happen, then yes, absolutely. But to just say, I want to spend a hundred grand to help alleviate the residents on Berry Street and Monroe and Arch Avenue, I don't, I just think it's disingenuous because two weeks ago, we amended the rules so that the assessments were different.
We amended the rules, the residents are still unhappy with the rules, we are now redeliberating. I really don't I, I, I really don't understand, disingenuous, this is a deliberative bottle, body. I bring forward an idea, we discuss it. You, you don't like what, this is the same thing that happened with the library. You don't like when I brought forward the library amendment, no, no. It was a, you, you can table it, you can vote on it when you want. I don't understand this idea that I brought it at the wrong time. I'm making a suggestion that will hopefully be amenable to the residents. And the idea that this is undercutting SADs is disingenuous. I initiated SAD reform. That SAD reform is bringing in another hundred and twenty thousand dollars this year. I'm suggesting that we use some of that money to bring down the cost. It's a suggestion, suggestion in relation to the objections that is rooted in the new special assessment policy.
Would, how do you understand, um, you, we use some of what money to bring down the cost?
We are taking in a new hundred and twenty thousand dollars in special assessments under the new policy.
Correct.
As opposed to the old. Let's use a hundred thousand, I, I threw out a number, let's negotiate. What would it take to get everyone's yes vote? We're taking in another hundred and twenty thousand, can we redistribute eighty? We would still be forty thousand more in the green than we were a month ago before this policy. I'm sorry, I'm getting flustered, but I don't understand how this is, we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in new revenue, excluding the college endowment, excluding the college one-time payments of a hundred thousand, excluding all the other changes we made.
What, what, where, where is that hundred thousand dollars in new revenue, is this coming from?
Hundred and twenty thousand dollars in new revenue from the new SAD policy.
From fifteen years.
No, no, from, from the, uh,
From the commercial and the industrial accounts primarily.
But forgive me if I misunderstood, that money is, through the SAD, is already being used to pay, it's, it's additional money through the SAD to pay for the road project specifically. It's already, that's why it's being assessed.
We haven't assessed it yet, we're about to assess a hundred and twenty thousand more than we would have a month ago, before we pass the new special assessment. I'm saying, let's not take that whole hundred and twenty thousand. We're still taking more than we would have under the old policy, but it will be slightly less.
Oh, okay.
I'm very confused, I'm not talking about spending money here, I'm talking about redistributing back out to the residents some of this money, I don't wanna use the word redistributing, uh, reducing the total amount of extra that we are taking in that we wouldn't have one month ago.
So the residents are still adamantly opposed to paying anything, as we heard tonight, um.
I don't think, I don't know that that's necessarily.
No, no, that's not true.
Table it, table it so he can talk to it.
Let's, uh, call him in the audience, thank you, Councilman Wolfram, thank you, thanks for getting that.
Yes, I think the problem that we have is the way the special assessment districts are set up in that I don't really know what my payments are gonna be. I know I could be, I could be five thousand, but maybe it's gonna turn out to be two thousand. So it would seem to me that when you actually bring this up and then the residents have a chance to decide if they like it or they don't like it, then they should know what their assessment, their actual assessment's gonna be. Not that it could be five thousand, or it might be two thousand, depending on what people do with the other thing. So I think that in the future, uh, when we do special assessments, that we should actually figure out from the staff, here's what the, what people are gonna be paying, then they can decide if they wanna do it or not. And people sitting out here, they don't know if they're gonna pay five thousand dollars or two thousand dollars. And so I can see why they might say, well, wait a minute, I don't, I'm opposed to this.
Yes, very good, Councilman Wolfram, thank you. Uh, Councilman Bentley.
Yes, I think, uh, I agree with Councilman Wolfram. But as, as I think Kim has explained before, like they don't know until the project's done, what it's gonna come down to, so I, I agree. We should just set a lower cap and make the cap what it's gonna be and collect the whole thing instead of making it some kind of a casino.
Well, yeah, I mean, and if it turns, if we set out what they are and it turns out that it actually costs more, then the city would have the very, the burden of this. But it might, unless they, unless city staff got it really off, then probably it would fit within our budget.
No, if, if we got the, the special assessments down to two thousand, twenty-five hundred, or three thousand, especially when you could get it down to two thousand, I doubt anybody would come here and say boo, because they'd get a nice apron and they'd get a nice robe and it wouldn't be what it is now, but five thousand dollar cap and then, like I say, casino is, is not, is not what anybody wants to do. A couple other things. Um, yes, we have, to address Councilman Soha, um, we have a, an obligation to the airport, uh, but I would point out that we seem to way exceed our obligation minimum. Um, and I wanna reiterate again that I think staff in the corner are, uh, do, do a great job and, and are competent and have integrity, so we're not trying, I'm not trying to throw any shade on them. And, and again, I think Mayor Portem is doing a fine job going into the statutes and saving the voters and the homeowners money. And I will support him whenever we get around to negotiating that.
Okay. Yes, Councilman Soha.
Thank you, I, I appreciate the Mayor Portem getting into the weeds and figuring things out, I do. I just don't, um, I, and I wanna bring this to a vote if everybody else is amenable to that. Um, so unless anybody objects, I'd like to put a motion to put this to vote. But, um, if you want to do the, of extra money out of the general fund to assist in these, just please give us the opportunity to make that decision as a council and set forth its policy moving forward, and then we can at least think about it and discuss it and not just, I just, not just have it thrown at me on the day that I'm voting for an assessment.
We're not voting on that today, again.
I understand.
I'm just suggesting it here, the residents don't want it, I am willing to vote yes if we agree, if council agrees, I guess I would just have to ask for your word, that when we, uh, propose the rules, we would amend these down and use some amount of money. We have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in new SAD revenue, in addition to all the other revenue that's coming in, in addition to the surplus. What if we use some of that additional SAD revenue to bring it down? I'll vote yes. Yes, uh, Councilman Flynn.
Should you have brought this up before we voted on Monroe Street? I feel that Monroe Street people are, are maybe getting a little, um, thrown under the bus here that you didn't, since we're only, what, two or three from Monroe Street and everybody else from Berry Street, that maybe they didn't get the same kind of, uh, love, for lack of a better word, than the Berry Street people are getting. This sounds like something that if you had this idea, we should have discussed it before we voted on Monroe Street.
Again, all we did was establish the SAD district for Monroe Street. I am suggesting a general policy for Arch, Monroe, and Berry in the future when we confirm the special assessment rules that would apply to all of them. I'm not, I'm not doing this just because Berry Street objected, although that's obviously the impetus to it. It would have passed tonight if they hadn't objected. Now I'm saying, what do we need to get, I would assume, Councilman Brunns, Bentley, and Soha's vote in order to pass this so that it moves forward? Yes, Councilman Flynn.
Uh, I plan to be in that no category as well for the simple fact that these people went above and beyond, you know, they turned in letters, they turned in petitions, they were told they didn't count. They went out and got letters and petitions again and went above and beyond and, and for them to do that a second time, and sometimes a third time, shows me that even though they're not opposed to paying a certain amount, what lays in front of us right now, they were opposed to. So I plan on voting no because these people, the people we represent, the people that elected us to do the job, are saying not tonight.
Fair enough, but do you think they want us to negotiate to build the road, or do you think they just want us to kill it?
I would think that
Negotiate.
I, I agree with the negotiation, but I also agree with my colleagues across the aisle here that having it thrown in front of us at the last minute, that's why I asked if we could table this because none of us were aware of this plan until ten minutes ago. Um, and I didn't know if this was something that this plan should, like Councilman Soha said, should follow every other plan, start in a committee, go through a committee, have the committee go on it, and have the committee bring it to the full council, and then we get a chance to talk about it, but just kind of throwing an idea all of a sudden, getting everybody all excited about it before it's gone through the proper channels, the proper steps, I don't think it's, that's right.
We have an objection in front of us, I'm proposing a solution, we are not voting on that solution tonight. I am bringing it up for deliberation, that's what we're doing, you all are saying this is not the right time to deliberate. I'm bringing up an idea to council, we'll take it to committee, we'll table the motion, and then we'll reconsider. Uh, I, I'm really baffled by this concern that this is out of order. We have an objection in front of us that we didn't know about a few days ago. Now let's reconsider that objection and see if we can find something. This is a third of all the road repairs that will get done in the city this year, more than a third. Yes, Councilman Wolfram.
Uh, it seems like what we might think about doing is if this votes down, which I'm presuming that it will, uh, that what we do is we restructure how we do special assessment districts in the way that I was talking about earlier. Have the staff do it, make the estimates, we say this is what they are, and then we come to the council, and then people can know what they're being assessed at. And it seems like we could redo that and then bring Berry Street back up once we've done something like that.
Very good, thank you, Councilman Wolfram, motion to table the Berry Street special assessment.
Orton.
Motion on the floor from Mayor Portem, so seconded by, uh, Councilman Stutcher. Roll call vote, Katie, thank you.
Councilmember, was it, Morsy?
No.
Soha?
No.
Stutcher?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Portem?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Bentley?
Yes.
Brunns?
Yes.
And Flynn?
Yes.
Was it five, three?
Okay, so now we have to set a new public hearing, correct? Or have we simply adjourned it? Thank you, Kim.
Can I request that we put this off until the first meeting in April to give me time to get this together?
Absolutely, yes, uh, when will the Arch Street come up, by the way?
That is under discussion.
Okay, so I, I hope we're not delaying too much since Arch Street is still out in the future. Yes, Councilman Soha.
To that point, I will be out of town the first meeting in April.
Okay, thank you.
Arch Street is a different, a different monster because of the funding that's coming from that.
That's right.
And we have a lot of us, I have to go through, I can't even a hundred percent say that I would get that project to the point where we can get to a construction this year.
Okay.
Um, because of the requirements on the federal side.
Do you have an, an absolute date that we would need for Berry Street?
Well, um, the more we delay, I can't put it out for bid and have it done this year. Contractors' schedules are getting up, so the more we start to delay, the intent is, I, with, if, if these were to move forward, was to go out to bid almost immediately so I could get them constructed this year.
Okay.
Um, can we, Berry Street's a small project, it's not something, but I, I, there's two things that happen as you delay the construction season. Contractors get busy, their prices go up, so will cost this morning. Um, and they may not even have room to be able to get it done, and then, of course, we get into winter. So, you know, and all of that, uh, comes, comes into play. And the one thing, you know, I, it may be, I may be out of place saying this, but I don't know that Kim necessarily knows all the prices to know how much we're saving by the changes that were made, in addition to the fact that none of what you've proposed is in the current budget or proposed in the next budget. We can't just say that we're gonna make a hundred thousand dollar change and start allocating things differently without going through our budget process with them as well, if I'm correct or incorrect, if I may have misspoken.
Just the SAD process.
Well, but still, that, that money and, and how we do that is all part of our budget process as well.
Right, but we'd be talking, it's, I, I'm still confused. One month ago, we had a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in less revenue.
Well, you know, I know that, I wasn't, as part of those conversations, I know you've made changes on the caps to the, but as Kim sat down and said, we have this much frontage. So this, with, based on the estimates that I have, do we have that actual amount of money? Do you have those numbers to say we have a hundred thousand or not a hundred thousand?
That was just, that was just the estimate, right, it was about a hundred and eighteen thousand in additional revenue. If, let's say it comes in at eighty, we can still discuss on that basis, right?
Yeah.
But, but the point is, is that, you know, I need, we need to make sure, and I may misspoke, babe, if, if, but I think it's gotta be part of the budget process and be a budget adjustment if we're doing things differently with regard to the SAD and where we're getting the money from.
I would just suggest that, uh, whatever negotiations take place, that, uh, we schedule a time that the finance director could be here as well, um, because she knows the numbers inside and out and, uh, can, can assist with this process.
Well, we follow proper due process with regard to the budget side of the whole thing. You know, what, what, however it gets funded, but that's, that's part of it that we need to keep in the back. As staff, because that's how we work our days, I mean, everything we do is something we proposed in budget, we've accepted in budget, and we do yearly through the budget and or budget adjustments. We as staff can't just walk up to, to our finance director and say, we're gonna take this hundred thousand dollars that was gonna go here and have it go there. And that's, that's, that's our job and things that we have to be cognizant of when we do these things.
But again, that's not what I'm suggesting, we have new revenue in the SAD, I'm saying let's.
But we need to, one, confirm it, and we need to, two, appropriately allocate it through the budget process to make sure that it's done properly through Karen, because they're being audited on this stuff. And, you know, and like I said, she's the one who needs to answer those questions to make sure that we're doing this right. I'm not saying that you're right or wrong and that that money's not there. I'm just saying we need to follow our budget process and make sure our finance director is on board with everything.
Well, it's not there, we haven't raised the SAD yet, right?
No, you did, you, you've, you've changed the policy. We just haven't sat down and assessed all the frontages and exactly what we're gonna have because Berry Street is largely residential. So you may or may not be gaining any money on Berry Street, you may be gaining it on Arch Street where we've raised those.
Right.
But you approved Monroe Street without having this discussion, you were talking about Berry. My confusion is, are you applying it just barrier to all three streets, as, as has been stated here.
A new policy, yes.
So Berry Street, if I recall, uh, Kim, you could confirm this, went up about eight thousand dollars. The, where we generated more revenue was in, in Arch Street and, uh, Monroe Street because they have larger furnages that we increased the caps to. So in effect, um, you would be giving Berry Street a benefit that was paid for by the other two.
Which is paid for by the folks on Arch Street.
But the folks on Arch Street are paying seven, what, no, that's Monroe Street, they're paying seventeen percent of the project cost, the folks on Berry Street are paying forty-three percent.
Well, yeah, but you are also, all the numbers you're talking about are estimates.
I know they're provisional, sure, right.
So those, so those are gonna change if the projects are coming in under it, it all changes. That's why I said it's, it's not, now is not the, it's not the time here to hash this out. It is the time to sit in committee and have discussions and allow us to actually put in our numbers with my estimate, with the engineering estimates, to make sure that we know what these numbers are and how exactly you're planning to apply it, and then if there's any issues on the budget side with regard to how Karen, Karen, our finance director, has to do that.
Yes, absolutely, I think that's what we're requesting, yes.
Um, in terms of the delay on the Berry Street, it was, there wasn't a vote to pass it. I mean, Berry Street wasn't gonna get done.
Right, exactly.
So, clearly it was gonna be delayed for, for who knows how long. But the fact that we've now, it doesn't seem to me that we're in a rush to get something decided about Berry Street because it wouldn't have happened anyway.
That's right.
So I think that what we ought to do is go back, like I said before, and look at how we assess these things so that, again, if there's, you know, if there's an error, then, you know, and, you know, we have very good staff, so I don't expect the errors to be very large, uh, then, you know, we'll have to, have to cover that. If we've set up, here's what everybody's, uh, here's what everybody's assessment's going to be. So I think that's what we ought to move forward on, uh, and realize that, hey, Berry, yeah, it's gonna delay Berry Street, but Berry Street was delayed anyway.
It's delayed or stopped.
Clearly it didn't have, you know, it had more than two no votes, so.
Yes, my question at this point, however, is if, if you're intending to apply this to all the streets, then we should not be going out to bid on Monroe Street either. Because we, we need to make sure that we know where we're at. I mean, I can put up bid tomorrow on Monroe Street and start the process for getting that started, that road built. It, we, you know, a, a month from now, I'm, I'm just cautioning, we may not get favorable pricing and we may have more difficulty getting the road built, the more we we may not get favorable pricing, we may have more difficulty getting the road built, the more we delay. But again, it can be built next year. It, it doesn't have to be done this year. It was just a project that we had earmarked for this year. But, um, all those factors play in at this time of year when we're talking, when we're sitting here in March and construction season, they were, they're already had, contractors already have their, their projects scheduled for most of the year. That's the reality.
I'm not suggesting that we do something with Monroe because as was pointed out, we're not gonna do something with West Street and, you know, we paid our five thousand dollars and, you know, it got done. So this is a matter of, okay, we're gonna, you know, the legislature changes statutes all the time. And so this would be more like, okay, we're changing the statute to address future, future SAD, or, or the.
Yes.
SADS, yeah, whatever they are.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Wolfram. Councilman Bentley?
Yes, uh, I don't like the delay either because she's ready to go to work. And frankly, I don't like, I don't, I don't like either the votes I had tonight. And I don't like the special assessments. I, I would suggest that this is one of the more productive meetings I've been a part of because we're hashing it out. And I don't know that we can't salvage the whole thing tonight if we just pick a number and say that's the residential cap and just revote both of them and I, I bet, I bet the Berry Street people would be fine for twenty-five hundred.
We don't have an agenda item to discuss that policy. But I voted no on Monroe Street, um, and I should have brought it up there and I do apologize for that. Um, but I could, you, me, who else voted? I think it was just me and Councilman Brunns voted no, so we could bring that up, um, again, I suppose. Yes.
So just a matter of clarification, that hundred and, I remember what the number was that you were clearing out, hundred and ten thousand or whatever, was based on all three projects that we were estimating being done this year?
Right.
It's looking like probably only two of them are going to be done. I don't know what the number, I didn't look at the number on Monroe Street, but the, the increased revenue on Berry Street by changing the policy was only ten thousand dollars.
It was almost all from Arch and Monroe. The difference, what, what I'm trying to get at is that the Monroe Street project, they're only covering seventeen percent of the cost. Um, for Berry Street, they're covering forty-three percent, so.
Right, because, because it's a different type of project and the infis, the, um, water and sewer portion is being covered completely by VPU separately from the street paving on Berry Street. So if you look at the total cost of the project, they're actually pro, they're pretty comparable, actually.
Right, but the city as a whole is paying more for Monroe Street, right? So that's all, that's all their tax dollars that are going to Monroe Street, uh, less to Arch because it has a grant, right?
Very nice, nothing to do with it. Um, the, the, the biggest difference in those percentages are, we calculated it under the previous policy. It was split fifty, I take fifty percent of that number and divide it by the number of parcels on the property. There's fewer parcels on, on Monroe Street, which that makes our percentage higher because there's only seventeen properties. There's more properties on Berry Street and that's a different type of project, so the cost is less. So you're spreading that. When we were doing it by parcel, we were spreading it over more parcels.
Right.
So you're not necessarily, when you say seventeen percent's being covered by the SAD, it's just a matter of the number of properties that we're being, that we're being accounted for, for that fifty percent. Or that, or when I, when I go back and say I have seventeen properties, bring five thousand, it's this much and that's whatever percentage of the seven hundred thousand in Monroe Street is.
Right.
So it's not, it's not necessarily that they're paying any, it's just the, by virtue of the, sole virtue of the number of parcels that are in that bed district.
But the city budget is covering more dollars for Arch and Monroe?
Yeah, you're not wrong about that. But what I'm saying is, is that when you, when you start throwing out percentages, that's not necessarily a good comparison between the two because there's, they're not equal in numbers of parcels. And so you can't say that there's, they're spending more or less because of that. That, that's my point, is that the numbers, we're not comparing apples to apples on the two projects and the number of parcels and the type of project.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay. I wanna, I, I said this a year ago, but I, I just wanna caution council about getting fired up about suggestions that are brought at the time of a conflict or a crisis. This is a deliberative chamber. This isn't a voting chamber only. We deliberate, right? We do that in common. This is the only time we get together as a whole council. We could do this through the committee, that's fair enough. But one great place to bring suggestions is when there is a conflict, right? That, that's, that's how we work towards solutions. If a problem comes up, we figure out, how can we solve that problem? I, I, I'm very shocked by the idea that this is disingenuous, or I'm throwing this out at you. There's a crisis, there's a problem, I'm making a suggestion. We have no old business. Uh, we closed the public hearing for Berry Street. Uh, we will put that under, um, probably the first meeting in April. No old business, no new business, no miscellaneous reports, general public comment.